Good evening. We would like to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. Let's turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith.
Mayor Watkins.
Present.
Vice Mayor Samely.
Here.
Councilmember Eric. Councilmember Eric is joining us via Zoom this evening. Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to invite all those who would like to participate in our invocation. It will be given tonight by Pastor Ken Miller with the Grace Lutheran Church. Afterwards, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. If we could all stand, if you'd like to participate.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we lift before you all who govern this city. May those who hold power understand that it is a trust from you to be used for the service of the people. Bless the public servants that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote our common life. Grant in your mercy just and honest government and give us grace to live together in unity and peace. Amen.
Amen. Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A.3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First, we have a call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. First, we'd like to ask Ms. Phyllis Arisepe?
Yes.
If you'd like to stand, come forward to the mic, please.
Hi, good evening. I have two things I want to discuss. The first one is, and I'm glad that the police chief is here, is the increased homelessness that has been noticed around town. I mean, people that clearly, I don't want to say don't belong here, but just, I mean, like a lot of younger people, and it's been brought to my attention that some of the people that are brought from, like, Havasu, Bullhead, and booked into our detention center here are just released into our population here and not taken back to where they were arrested. And I've noticed a lot more encampments behind Kingman Regional, by the Wellness Center, back in the shopping center by Big Lots, where the Fit Cafe is. There was a bunch of people that gathered there with their baskets and everything else, and there's an increase in crime. So I was wondering what the city council proposes to do or how the police department is addressing that as far as relocating them back where they came from or getting them off the streets. The second thing I'd like to address, I live at 1954 Dell Evans Way, and when Allo came in to do all their fiber optic running, they left holes that are probably three and a half feet by two and a half feet. There's six just on my street that are divots about this deep. So is there some way that you guys can have Allo come back out and repair them appropriately since they opened up those holes so that I'm not dragging asphalt into my garage in mud and dirt whenever it rains or when it snows? It's very, it's annoying. And they're all over the block in Wallack Ranch, most of Wallack Ranch. And that's it. So will someone get back to me on my concerns or?
Our city manager has heard your, and of course, our various city departments, so I'm sure action will be taken.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Next, Deanna Haas.
Mayor Watkins, Vice Mayor Samely. I don't know if I said that right, Samely. Councilmembers and city manager Walsh. First, I want to thank you for allowing me time to stand before you this evening. My original purpose for coming here tonight was to complain, I guess is a good word, and to raise awareness for the conditions on Rickett Court. I did send an email out on Saturday, and I appreciate the responses that I got back and the awareness that was raised through that. Yesterday, I spoke with, I was gathering signatures from my neighbors for a petition, and I saw the foreman for the construction company that works in the area. And I said, oh, I see someone got my email. And he goes, a lot of people got your email. So I want to appreciate the quick response that I got from this company. Early this morning, there was a gentleman out with a street sweeper cleaning the street, and they were out this afternoon filling in holes. However, that doesn't stop the water leaks. So now we're covering up the holes, and this afternoon, there was another water leak, not in the hole they had fixed yet. So our concern is, is that we need to have these water lines fixed before we come in and pave because we're just going to keep getting more water leaks. These water leaks have been going on for over two years, so it's not something that just happened when Allo came in and put in their lines, although there were some issues there, too. We would like to see the pipes replaced, and I did not know this was on the agenda, and I apologize. But I was told by a city worker on Saturday that they had come in 20 years ago and replaced all the water pipes off the main line to our homes. And I said, I've been here for 28 years, my husband's been there for 34 years. To our knowledge, there have been no pipes replaced. They used polyethylene pipe, or PE, and evidently, that's not working, and so we feel that something needs to be done. Your guys, the city guys, are coming in and they're, you know, having to put Band-Aids upon Band-Aids. And I really feel bad because I believe they only have two crews of four guys that are trying to cover the whole city and surrounding area. And so I don't know what it would take to hire more people, you know? I know that we have a limited amount of funds in our town and that you don't get property taxes, which I don't feel is right. But the city needs to be more aware of, and I'm sure you are, I'm not just picking on one specific person, but, you know, upgrading these and adding more people to the repairs. I don't know if anybody keeps track of the phone calls. I myself have called in at least 12 times as of today on water leaks since February. And I don't know if anybody keeps track, if they have call logs, work orders, you know, if there's anybody overseeing all that, sorry. I know the city has been beautifying our downtown area for tourists, which is important, but the residents should be a priority. We live here, we work here, we eat here, we shop here. And I appreciate your time, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Deanna. Next, Becky Fassen.
Hello, mayor and council members. I just, you guys get a lot of complaints up here all of the time, and I just wanted to take a minute to publicly thank all of you for being such an awesome team and helping out so much. We've had two big events with the, first Friday, what, a week ago? It feels like it was a month ago already. But just between Main Street, KDMA, or Downtown Merchants Association, the Chamber, Economic Development Team, the streets, the Public Works, all of the different departments working together, we brought over 9,000 people downtown for that event, and it was just amazing. And it wouldn't have happened without all of your wonderful employees working together. And then the following weekend, or last weekend, the Chamber put on a big event down at Metcalf Park, Rhythm and Brew's, and it ran into a little snafu. And luckily, knew some people, made a couple of phone calls, and I just want to give, like, sainthood to Jack Plante for coming down and solving problems and just making it where our food trucks were there and available for everybody. So I just wanted to say thanks, you guys are amazing.
Thank you, Becky. Item number two on our agenda, Consent Agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, items A through F, are there any items that need to be pulled? Vice Mayor?
I'd like to pull F, please.
Item F, okay. Anybody else, council? Anything else? Okay. Can we have a motion then approving our consent agenda items A through E?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Water Repair Asphalt Patching. The attached proposal from McCormick Construction is for asphalt patching of water repair cuts in the roadway. There is a backlog of approximately 2,579 square feet of asphalt repairs to be completed. The total impact, total fiscal impact for the attached proposal is $97,590.13, and will be paid from the Water Capital Renewal Fund. Staff recommends approval. Vice Mayor?
I only pulled this just for a couple of questions and sort of clarification and also to notice the public. So I was curious as to what the timeline is going to be for the remainder of the patches that need to be done.
Sure. First off, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council. We actually had, McCormick was here already working on some patches on a different contract we had set up with them, didn't require council approval. We've added to that to try and get caught up on the backlog and take care of that. So they're already working. They'll move as soon as that is done onto what you guys are approving this evening. Probably, we're looking another two weeks. They've indicated that they should be able to complete everything by the end of the month is the goal at this point in time unless something doesn't work out for us.
Okay, perfect. And then I just would like to suggest that we have a list of those patches that are to be made available to the public, just so they know where those patches are going to be, where they're located, if we're missing anything and it's in a neighborhood that there are patches that are not listed, that they can contact the city and they can get into that rotation. So it's kind of like winning the lottery, right? When you, when you get a patch in your neighborhood and it's going to be coming up. So I want to give the public something to look forward to as far as, you know, where those areas are. So if we could add that to the streets page or somewhere on our city pages?
So I guess that timing is going to work out because the next council meeting will be bringing back something that Councilman Eric had requested in regard to the Streets Landing page and some additional information. So that's something we can definitely try and add to that. I will put, it'll probably be something that updates maybe weekly or something just because of the volume that come in, especially during the hot months. As you guys see, we, last time I was here, we were reporting a little over 400 patches, and we're actually approaching 600 right now that are completed since July 1st. So we'll definitely try and add something that shows an outstanding list or something like that. We'll find something.
So something similar to the paving and crack sealing that we're doing in the different districts, I think it's appropriate since we have such a large number, so.
So we have an app, and that might be the piece that can be used. I don't know how we turn it externally so people outside can see it, but it's something I can work with Mr. Garmin on and come up with some kind of solution.
Okay. And then my very last question to you is, how best should the public report these areas that are needing patches or that have been a problem area in their neighborhood? What is the best way for the public to get these rectified?
So, and I should know it by heart, but honestly, the best way, if it's during normal hours, they can call Public Works, our main line, and somebody will grab that and create a work order right away. If it's after hours, we've actually been, and I say we, Rob, and Kealan Side have been working with IT updating the website, but sending them to dispatch, and that one is actually 928-753-8050, and dispatch will know who's on call and get crews out after hours.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Have a good evening.
Mayor, I had a question, too.
Yes, Chengus.
Jack, hi. I have a quick question in regards, so I know there's a lump sum figure of that $95,000, but do we have an idea of what each cost, like, a single patch would be estimate, you know, average? Because my question is, you know, if we do all these patches and then we end up having to replace the PE pipes that are passed through or, you know, past their lifetime service, would it be more cost efficient to wait until then?
The cost on that, it gives you a total in there, but the proposal is about $34, $35, I'm sorry, I can't remember exactly off the top of my head, per square foot. So one by one piece costs us about $30 for the dig out and patch back. As far as waiting, I know there's some funding in place to try and do services, but I know that those have been being prioritized by services we've been back to multiple times. We could come back to some we've patched, but I don't know what the timing would be waiting to get back to those at a later date. They may leave, they may not, but they are keeping a priority list of those ones that are problematic, and that's the ones that are hitting first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. You guys have a good evening.
You, too. Vice Mayor, would you like to make a motion then?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item F on the consent agenda, Water Repair Asphalt Patching.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, Old Business, 3A, Rancho Santa Fe Development Agreement, update from KDP Manager LLC. At the March 11th, 2024 special council meeting, updates were provided by representatives from both sides of the KDP Manager LLC ongoing litigation. Council requested an update from both parties at the June 4th, 2024 meeting. Council voted to continue the update until the June 18th council meeting. We'll turn some time over to our city manager, Tim Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We reached out again to KDP Managers, both sides of that issue. At, as was mentioned during the last meeting, they were in the middle of arbitration and were unable to make it to the June 4th meeting, so council continued it to this meeting. We did reach out again to them in requests that they come and give an update. What we received was a prepared statement. Basically, it says that we have entered into a settlement agreement in principle and are currently working out the details. Apparently, part of that settlement is, they could not make it here today to share that information, but we are in communication with them. They're working out the details on their end, and we're pursuing the contract as outlined in our agreement with them. So later on, we'll have additional information in our, in my report regarding the two interchanges or I can share it right now, whichever you'd prefer, mayor.
Council, would you like to hear it now? Tim?
All right.
Continue.
Happy to continue sharing. So we have, we did send the payment to ADOT on June 6th. Per the agreement, we invoice KDP Managers on June 6th as well. Per the agreement, they have 10 days to remit payment to the city for their portion of the construction. That came in just over 14 million. The 16th would have been 10 days. We have not received payment. We issued a notice to them of breach that was sent out today to KDP Managers. So we notified them that they have not, that they are not in compliance with the contract and that they need to remedy that, they need to cure that immediately. The contract allows a certain timeframe for them to be able to remedy that, but we're continuing down that path on the contract. So the good news on the other side, we are scheduled on the June 21st meeting with ADOT, that is this Friday, to be heard in Flagstaff to add our project to their list. And talking with ADOT, they're looking the second week in July that they'll have that out to bid, so moving right along.
That is great news. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Walsh on this matter? Thank you, Tim. Item 3B, MUC referral, of course Municipal Utilities Commission referral, sewer connection for APN 324-14-522B. Kevin Musro applied for an exception to connect to sewer for parcel 324-14-522B. Connection to sewer would require 482 feet of sewer line to be constructed. The applicant plans to build a duplex on this parcel. The request was heard by the Municipal Utility Commission on May 9th, 2024. At the June 4th, 2024 city council meeting, council continued this item and directed staff to bring it back to the June 18th meeting with additional information on the cost for the city to install the sewer extension and assess paybacks to the property owners upon connection. The Municipal Utilities Commission recommended granting the exception, 4-0 was the vote. Staff recommends council deny the variance and direct staff to install the sewer connection and assess the utility payback to parcels A through F outlined on the city engineer's map. Mr. Garmin, glad to have you here.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor and council. This map shows the six parcels that would be involved in the payback for the sewer extension. The estimate that Mr. Musro had for roughly $70,000, I think, is probably a little bit light. I did my own cost estimate using some recent bid data we had, and it was a little bit, it was closer to $104,000, once you include the design and everything. So the numbers that are mentioned there in the agenda item are what you get whenever you use $104,000. Right. So the, Mr. Musro sent us his quote that he got today from his contractor. I would note that we've never received a right-of-way permit from this contractor before. I'm not sure that he's actually licensed to work in the city right of way. And the cost estimate just says 482 feet of sewer line at $150 per foot. So there's not really any other details regarding pavement restoration, whether he's going to install manholes, which this actually requires two manholes. That kind of information, the pavement restoration is pretty expensive. It's, I mean, it's 500 feet of pavement that's four inches of asphalt that he's going to have to restore. And I just, I didn't know that, whether any of that was actually included in this quote or not. And again, the design is probably going to be $70,000 or $8,000, and I know that's not included in there, so. Anyway, using my estimate, Mr. Musro would have to pay his share of the payback plus a $3,000. It costs about $3,000 to do a sewer tap out to the city main. So that compared to what he would pay for a septic system, which is closer to like $10,000, it's almost double. But if we grant him the exception, then he's going to have a septic system and we'll never get him to connect because it'll, his septic system will last a long time, and we'd never get those connections from those other lots as well. So the recommendation is to go ahead and deny the exception. The city would pay for the sewer extension and they'd get a payback from all the parcels that are listed on the map there. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. That is a little bit tricky on the wording on that, council, as far as, of course, once again, we're actually helping Mr. Musro out by the city paying for the whole cost of the project, but we're going to assess him his portion of it because of the six lots, so they all participate.
Right, mayor. According to the utility regs, Mr. Musro would be required to do the extension himself and pay for it all out of his own pocket. So in fact, this is a way for the city to help him out.
Okay. Of course, this is located in the county, but we were encouraging everybody to connect to our sewer line as it also courses as out through the county area.
Right. You never know what parts of the city we're going to end up inheriting eventually one of these days, and not only that, but he's within the water, the city's water sewer service area, so.
Correct. Okay. Yes, councillor Savage?
Lot B and F, if those are subdivided and you get two different owners on each property, would they be required to be part of that payback as well?
Councilmember Savage, the only people that are required to pay are people that have frontage. So if they split those two lots in half, just the lot that has frontage to the sewer system would be required to pay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a question about the assessment itself. So the assessment that goes on this parcel is paid at what time, during what timeframe? Over time, immediately, upon sale? I feel like that's a Tina question.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your question, vice mayor. It's paid at the time, one time, upon connection in the county. It's, if you have a property out in the county and you have a utility payback tied to that piece of property, you're required to pay it upfront upon the sewer connection being made.
Okay, so these other properties, upon improvements to their property, that's when they would pay to hook up, and that's when the assessment, they would have to pay the assessment?
That's correct.
Okay, so because he's going to improve right of way, that is going to be a cost for him right of way?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Don't run away, Tina. I got a question for you. Actually, either Tina or Mike. Adding on to councillor Savage's question, isn't there a way that we could put in it so the parcels B and F, because obviously, we want more connections to the sewer. That's the whole idea of it, to recapture that water. Can't we, even if they were to split, can't we put that in the, in the instructions on that dividing, of splitting those parcels, that they have to connect to the sewer?
Mayor?
You know, the half lots that are interior?
I think what would happen is the lots on B and F, if they split off,
Right.
they would be required to do their own sewer extension on the local street there from bank.
Okay, so they will be required to it then? Okay, good. I just want to make sure we're covered there.
Right, right.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, can we have a motion then? Oh, I'm sorry, Tina, I'm sorry.
No, it's quite all right, mayor, thank you. I just wanted to also let the council know that every year in our five-year CIP, we do set aside monies for sewer extension purposes. We, close to, I want to say, $300,000 to $500,000. So as far as the cost of having to install this extension, it's $100 and some thousand dollars, so there wouldn't be an issue in finding the appropriations for that. Just wanted to be sure council was aware if that's.
Actually, Tina, thank you. I know, vice mayor, you oftentimes want to know where the monies are coming from, so we appreciate you giving us that information. Okay?
I just.
Yes, vice mayor.
Before we make a motion, is it possible, does the applicant have anything that they would like to say?
I bought the two lots, A and then the one behind it. Oh, yeah. I bought the two lots, A and then the one next to it, and what I bought it for is for an investment. Moved up here to Kingman six years ago and saw that this was up for sale, so I bought it. And I wanted to eventually put some type of commercial business there and to get it all taken care of. And I had John Huff, a general contractor, him and I met up because he was doing some other work for me, and I said, hey, would you be interested in building on this? And he said, you know what? Why don't we put a couple of duplexes there? So he did a perp test on the one that's to the left, and it has septic, okay. He installed septic, and I'm 18 foot from regulation to have septic, and I'm going to be paying.
Mr. Musro, be sure to speak into the mic, please.
Yeah, I'm 18 foot from regulation to have septic, and the property isn't even worth what it would cost me of $72,000 versus $10,000 for a septic. And he's ready to build, and you know what? Let's get this place looking good. Bank Street, all the. Let's get this place looking good. Bank Street, all those empty lots. In fact, I'm possibly going to be trying for B also and put more duplexes there. So that's, I mean, eighteen foot from regulation to get a septic. And I already have a septic for the, for other one. And we're going to put four duplexes there. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, good?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay, so actually, Mr. Musgrove, I think city staff has come up with a great solution for this, for this issue. So, um, I think it's a, it's a win-win for everybody here, so.
Mayor, if I may, what was the payback on his parcel? Do you have that broke down per parcel?
It's about seventeen thousand dollars.
Seventeen thousand?
And then he's got to pay like three thousand to get his sewer tap in, so it's going to be about twenty-one thousand dollars out of his pocket.
In my opinion, this is, we've looked at other, um, variances and we've given them, but they were single lots, that it didn't make any sense. There was no payback around it. This is, we're, we're planning for the future. I think it makes sense.
It does. Okay. Can we have a motion then where we deny the variance, but we direct staff to install the sewer extension and assess utility payback to parcels A through F? Outlined on the city engineer's map.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Have motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on our agenda, item four, new business. For A, authorize the mayor to execute a corridor development agreement for I, the I forty tradeport corridor. The I forty tradeport corridor, I forty TPC, project represents a collaborative and visionary endeavor poised to revolutionize clean energy, logistics and industrial development across an expansive eight-hundred-and-five-mile stretch along the I forty, initially spanning two states. The U.S. Department of Transportation Regional Infrastructure Accelerator Grant and a partner with the Build Amer- at Build America Bureau designated and awarded the I forty TPC as a recognized project that is positioned to leverage both public and private funding. To advance participation in the I forty TPC, a corridor development agreement has been established to solidify the coalition partnership among key stakeholders in Arizona and New Mexico. Staff recommends council authorize the mayor to execute a corridor development agreement for the I forty tradeport corridor. And we'll turn some time over to Tina Maline.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members this evening. So we have been working on the I forty tradeport corridor for goodness, well over a year, probably close to two years now. And we were fortunate enough about eight or nine months ago to receive that designation from the U.S. Department of Transporta- Transportation of this project being recognized as a, um, as it, within their accelerator program. And so behind the scenes, because this project involves many agencies as well as GLD Partners, um, who is, um, our, our private, our private investment partner. Um, and we have Adam Wasserman on the line with us this evening, and he'll be available to, uh, answer any questions you might have. But we've been working behind the scenes to put together now some sort of agreement that outlines all of the roles and the responsibilities and the structure of what this project is going to entail and ultimately what we are going to deliver, um, on it. So the agreement before you this evening, um, is, is, um, is what we're asking for you to review, consider and possibly authorize the mayor to execute. But before we dive into the details of the agreement, I just want to give a, a couple of slides overview of the project, kind of what Kingman, uh, looks like in this project, and then cover, um, some of the details within the agreement with you. So the overall project, it's a multi-state clean energy, logistics and industrial development system, and it involves Arizona and New Mexico. Specifically, that's the city of Kingman, it's the city of Winslow, and it's the Albuquerque area. Uh, there are three agencies in the Albuquerque area that will benefit from this, and that is Burnaleo County, Sandoval County, and the villages of Los Lunas. Um, as I shared earlier, as the mayor also stated, it was granted the designation of the Regional Infrastructure Accelerator by the U.S. Department of Transportation. The great thing about receiving that designation is that this project now puts, puts it on the map from the federal government perspective, as well as allowing us now to apply for federal granting opportunities. And the infrastructure itself does include zero emission truck charging and fueling stations, facility location of medium and large-scale distribution and production facilities, as well as truck parking, retail services, business support services. So what does Kingman's tradeport, as we are referring to it, consist of? There are two major components for Kingman's piece of this entire corridor project. It will provide efficient goods distribution and supply management while reducing greenhouse emissions, and that's going to be done through the construction of a truck mobility complex and that will include electric vehicle stations, hydrogen fueling lanes, and it will be powered by solar. It also, and we have talked about this for many, 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 many years, it will capitalize on Kingman's proximity to air and rail transport. So there will be the opportunity to expand in industrial manufacturing, uh, facilities. So looking at the agreement, um, as I shared earlier, it's just an overarching agreement outlining structure, roles, responsibilities of all of the members and partners, uh, involved in this project. Um, the, the, there are six partners in that, those, that's the three agencies in New Mexico, the city of Kingman, city of Winslow, and GLD Partners. That's Adam Wasserman and Lois Yates. They were here in March to, uh, to share a little bit about that project. Uh, they also are referred to in the development agreement as Tradeport Development Corporation, so TDC. The project's expectations, it's really about being an economic driver and providing service and facilities. And ultimately, what the agreement states is that the corridor itself will generate anywhere between seventy-five to a hundred thousand jobs over a twenty-to-twenty-five-year period. So this isn't a, a project that's going to take place in just a few years. It is a long build-out process, twenty-to-twenty-five years. Talks about the estimated investment. So overall, the cost of the truck mobility complexes along the corridor, all of the utility infrastructure, the road infrastructure involved with this project is about one and a half billion dollars. But on top of that, our, uh, our partner, GLD Partners, um, will be looking for private investment to actually find those private, uh, companies to actually build the manufacturing facilities and the production facilities, uh, for all of that infrastructure. Uh, let's see, it also talks about fiscal responsibilities. So because we're going to be applying for so many grants in this process, someone needs to oversee all of that. Burnaleo County has been kind enough to step up to the plate, uh, to take on that role with us, the rest of the agencies, providing all of the reporting that they need to meet all of the federal requirements. So it outlines that in the agreement. It also outlines TDC or GLD Partners as the ones that will be responsible for the private investment and overseeing those monies and ensuring that they are allocated the way that they are intended to be allocated. Um, and then lastly, it also talks about coordinating with all of the hubs. This isn't something that just Kingman is going to benefit from clearly. So we will work with all of the hubs to make this a large corridor project. Again, it's a lot more attractive for federal funding purposes doing it that way as well. The term of the agreement are, it's a five-year term with renewal upon the, uh, the acceptance of an, an updated strategic plan. So GLD Partners will be putting together a strategic plan outlining the infrastructure and how we're going to get to the first phase, right, and then maybe the second phase. As they put those together and as all of the agencies, all of the members within the agreement agree, then that term will renew for another five years and then renew again for another five years. It is a, again, five-year term with renewal. What this, what this agreement does not do and is not intended to do yet, it does not contain any sort of language about financial commitments for any of the agencies. So this does not outline how, um, how GLD Partners is going to be paid, how the city of Kingman might want to participate or pay, how much grant funding we're going to be required to go after. None of that is outlined in this agreement. This is just the first step, ensuring that all of the partners are on the same page. Also, it allows us to start applying for some of those major federal funds. Many of them require an agreement of the large project agent, the agencies within a large project before we can even, um, uh, be recommended for receiving those monies. So that is what the overall, that's what's included in the agreement. So what are those next steps? Uh, the next step is executing the corridor development agreement. It's important to share that the three agencies in Albuquerque, their boards and their council have, at this point, agreed, uh, to the agreement or approved the agreement. Winslow, it will be going to city councils, Winslow City Council next week, and then it's before you this evening. Um, the next step, when we talk about financial commitments and how GLD Partners will end up ultimately, um, getting compensated, if there's anything that we want to contribute outside of grant funding, that will come to you in a different agreement. And that will be discussion and, um, potentially work sessions. And that is what we're calling the Tradeport Kingman Hub Agreement, so it's specific to Kingman. Each of the locations will have their specific agreements and also a development agreement with GLD Partners. So those will come hand in hand so that, uh, you have then the input as far as the financial considerations. So with that, I have Adam on the, again, joining us via Zoom to answer any questions that you might have. And city staff is certainly available to answer any questions you might have as well.
Thank you, Tina. Counsel, any questions for Tina or Adam or city staff? Yes, Counselor.
Couple of things. Uh, you mentioned one point five billion dollars. Is that specifically for our part of the port?
It is not. It's for the entire.
Okay, so if that's for the entire port and they're investing all this money, why are the agreements based on five years? Shouldn't it be, or are they going to move them if, if someone doesn't agree to continue after the five years?
Adam, would you like to answer that question?
If I'm making sense.
Is that what we're talking? Um, I, I think that's just for the comfort of the public agencies to make sure they're comfortable as the project grows. Frankly, from a private investor perspective that wants to be invested in the project, um, you know, they would want to see a longer-term commitment. But I think, uh, you know, between interactions with each of the public agencies, the, the cities and the counties, it was felt that, you know, let's start with five years, let's keep it rolling, making sure everybody continues to agree because we want each of the public bodies to feel like this is a project for them, of them, and they're, you know, an integral partner in it.
Thank you.
And Counselor Savage, it might be important to point out too that it's unanimous agreement by all of the agencies for each of those renewal terms.
So really, once again, this agreement basically says, yes, we're very interested, and that's what this is all about. They're interested in participating.
That's correct.
There's no, as you mentioned already, there's no monetary commitment, right, at this point in time?
That's right, Mayor.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Can we have a motion then approving item four A, authorize the mayor to execute a corridor development agreement for the I forty tradeport corridor?
That's so moved.
All motion.
Will it, Annie, decide who?
Counselor Member Savage.
I'll second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you for all. Item four B, rezone parcels on Bank Street, residential, uh, R and R to commercial C two. North Bank Street from Airway Avenue to Gordon Avenue is a five-lane arterial roadway. From Airway Avenue to Kino Avenue, the properties fronting Bank Street are zoned light industry, I one, community business C two, or service business zone C three, consistent with the general plan. From Kino Avenue to Gordon Avenue, some of the properties fronting Bank Street are zoned rural residential, R R, which is not consistent with the general plan and not compatible with a five-lane arterial. Staff seeks counsel's direction to begin the rezone process to rezone these remaining properties from rural residential to community business C two zone in order to promote commercial development along this corridor. Staff recommends approval to begin the rezone process. Mike, glad to have you here.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Counsel. Um, yes, you may recall at the, um, in a meeting in May, we had a, a rezone that came forward to you, um, which kind of led to some of this discussion. It was the parcels that are on the northwest corners, the two parcels on the northwest corner of Kino and Bank. What we have is, we, the, the general plan, land use designation for those parcels that front Bank, um, Bank Street are designated as commercial use. Uh, we have a number of, um, undeveloped parcels along Bank Street that front on Bank Street on both sides, on the east and on the west side that we identified in this map, you can see outlined in black. With the exception of the one that's on the southwest corner of Coronado, um, it's bolded in black, but, uh, we had a recent application for rezone that, uh, on, on that one to rezone it from rural residential to, um, C, C two. Um, the two down below, uh, as I indicated earlier, at, uh, the northwest corner of, of Kino and Bank, um, were part of that rezone that, that took place recently, so they're, uh, they're going to be, that zoning is going to be changed to C two. But what we're asking for is, uh, just to get direction from counsel of, uh, whether or not we want to move forward with initiating a rezone application, city initiated, uh, initiated a rezone application to take the, these nine parcels that, uh, are still currently zoned rural residential that front along Bank Street to be consistent with the city's, uh, general plan and land use plan, uh, to commercial, to a commercial use. That's really it in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Yes, Counselor.
Thanks for coming. Um, from Airway to Kino on Bank, is that all C two?
Airway to, um, from Airway north to Kino on both sides of Bank Street, it's all commercial use, but some of that is zoned light industrial, some of it is C two, some of it is C three.
But it's all commercial?
It's all, it's all commercial.
Okay.
There's, there are no resi- that's why they're not included here. Those are already zoned, uh, commercial.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Mike, what kind of fiscal impact, um, on a positive note, is it for these, these business, landowners?
Well, we're at, the, a, a rezone application is generally a thousand dollars, so the, you know, the, these landowners would not be required to, to pay that application fee.
Okay.
There's some discussion about whether or not, uh, there would be some pot, potential increased property values if it's going from a residential use, um, to a, to a non-residential, commercial use. Um, so that, there, there could be that. Obviously, we're going to have to notify the property owners that, that they're subject to this action as well as the surrounding properties that, uh, would be subject to the notification, uh, requirements.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Savely.
If a, uh, property owner does not want to change their zoning to commercial, they want to stay rural residential, what happens then?
I'll, I'll defer that to the city attorney. I, um, there again, it's, it's part of the, the city's land use plan is for all those to be, uh, commercial use. So I don't know if they have, if, can they object to that if they, uh, if, if they wanted to?
Well, I mean, yeah, they can object. Um, and it, it basically comes down to a point where if there's someone who doesn't want that, then we probably want to talk to the council to see what action the council wants to take. If you want to drag them kicking and screaming or let them stay where they're at, because obviously there is the concern of the Prop two oh seven, the infamous Prop two oh seven we always talked about, which is the diminution of the value of the property. There'd be arguments that, but probably not lowering the value of the property if you're going from rural residential to commercial. But, uh, i- i- it, I guess I would say it's a hurdle when you get to that point to see if there's some objections. And then whether the council wants to proceed with that particular property or not.
So, um, if a property owner objects, that information will come back to the council before they will be forced to, to change.
When we go through the notification processes to let these property owners know that that's what the city's intending to do is to rezone these properties, if we get any objections to that, obviously that's going to be communicated to the council.
Okay. And if, say you can't get a hold of a property owner, then does it, does it just proceed without?
Well, you, we, there's statutory notice requirements.
Okay, so everyone will be contacted.
Everybody will be contacted.
Everyone will have a choice.
There'll be postings and a public notice in the paper as well as mailers, so.
We'll go through the, the normal process that we would do if it was one of the landowners that submitted an application for rezone. We'll just do it with the city initiating that action and, and we'll, so we'll go through that entire. that entire motion on each one of these properties. Each one of these properties will be posted, as Carl had mentioned. We'll reach out to the property owners, notifying them that this is the intended action. We've had some other interest in some of these other parcels as well that, about, you know, applying for a rezone, so we anticipate that there's not going to be much of any objection to this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. That's a good question. Mike, I see this as a great thing because Bank Street is our next commercial corridor that needs to be developed, and so it's, this is huge. It's good stuff.
Bank Street is designated as an overlay zone, so.
Exactly.
It's intended to be commercial all along the frontage of Bank Street. So this is just going to formalize that so we can, it'll actually make it easier for people, if a potential development comes forward with an application, it'll just make it easier for them to be able to, to develop the property that way.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mike? Can we have a motion then for item 4B, rezone parcels on Bank Street residential RR to commercial C2, and to begin, for staff to begin the rezone process?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ward, we'll give it to you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Okay, item 5, department reports. 5A Retail Coach update. We'll turn some time over to, I, city manager, I'll let you introduce and start this, since it's their department reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got Retail Coach that will be coming up, but before Retail Coach speaks, we'll have Sylvia Schaefer, who's over our retail economic department, economic development department, the, the retail division. So she'll come up and give us a report, and then, and then turn some time over to the Retail Coach.
Thank you. So, good evening. Hope everybody's doing good. Retail's always fun to talk about, for sure. Thank you for letting me come tonight and just share a little bit about what I do. So I'm Sylvia Schaefer, Economic Development Project Manager for the city of Kingman. One of my primary focuses is bringing retail to Kingman. I've been working in this position since about 2019. Since then, we've actually had, you know, about a dozen new retailers come in. We've had a lot of good connections made with commercial plaza owners, property owners, and it's just a part of my daily work is what I do, you know, reaching out to them, seeing how we can help, see how we can help existing businesses, see how we can bring more, right? I do attend three conferences a year. They're both, all three of them are retail related. ICSC Las Vegas, ICSC actually Western Region, that's more of a local for the western side of the states, basically, and then a multi-unit franchising conference. Had the pleasure of Vice Mayor attending with me and City Manager on this last conference, so they got to see a lot of what's going on there and what we do. And even though I've said this in probably two minutes, it's actually a lot going on with just those tasks that we do daily. And with that being said, in about 2023, the Economic Development Department decided to hire a retail consultant and look for additional help to be an extension of our team. And so how that's transpired is that really it's made a significant impact in one year. You know, everything I can do as one person has been doubled or tripled, because now I have Caleb Wilson, who is here tonight to represent the Retail Coach and present you with the update of what they do behind the scenes. Like anytime I see a property open or a building open, I can say, Caleb, there's something open in town. Can we work with this property owner and have somebody come in? What can we do to help them move along? So that teamwork is great. Also, working up at the conferences, when we are there, they assist us with some demographics, setting up meetings. We have a booth that we can meet with various retailers and commercial developers, so that is definitely great, because when I first started going to these conferences back in 2019, it was very, actually, it was always very difficult to get meetings going with these retailers. And over time, we started getting more, and now it's more like they want to talk to us. So this is great success. It shows how much Kingman is being, is much more, is attractive right now, basically. I'm saying it's a good time. So with that being said, I'd like to have Caleb come up and do his presentation, and if you have any questions for either one of us, I'll be available, available for you. Do you know where to find your presentation here?
Oh, I think it'll be pulled up.
Okay, all right.
Most likely. Right, presentation? I thought it was uploaded into the agenda. I think it's in the agenda. Anyway. Hi, Mayor. Hi, Vice Mayor, Counsel. It's been a year since, since we started, and Sylvia's right. You know, Kingman, after hearing a lot of feedback since we started, it's always been on the radar, I think, for, for some people. And what's, what's changing now is, is you've really matured as a retail market. A lot of these national groups have really started to take a better look and more of their time into investing, you know, look into the site selection strategies for Arizona, and including Kingman in that process. So wanted to just give, give a little bit of an update as, as to where we are today. I'm going to lay a baseline more on the data side, just because I think it's helpful to know what we've prepared since the beginning and what we usually share to those retailers and restaurants and entertainment users for Kingman. And that way you know a little bit better as to kind of how, kind of the process goes. So, because we started out with an initial match list that we believe is a good match for Kingman, and that's based off of a couple of things. So your, your, your trade areas, average household income, their median household income, some traffic counts as well, and then proximity to existing retail. So those are really elementary terms for, for some of these, these retailers, but that's kind of the baseline which you need to think about whenever you, you go into it and, and look to some of those, you know, new locations for some of these groups. And I'll, I'll point to it if I can. Do I have access to it, or do you have access to it? You got it?
It's made, so you can just tell me.
Awesome. We'll go to, we'll go to the next one. So Aaron and myself are on the project here. So Aaron is the president of the Retail Coach. He's been with the Retail Coach for, I think, 17 years now. Company started back in 2000. So we've, we've got a really good establishment with a lot of these site selectors, these, these retailers, these presidents of these companies, these developers, et cetera, that are active in the U.S. and have had the relationship for a long time with a lot of them. And we can go to the next one. The next, I'm sorry. Again, we're just going to go a little bit backwards. I think we've, we've talked about this in some of our initial meeting with you all. Just a metric that I think is, is interesting from a cell phone data perspective, is, which is what we use to identify what your retail trade area is. So we've gone in and used locations like Walmart, in addition to probably 10 to 12 others within Kingman, and plotted all of that cell phone data on a map and said, okay, where's the primary customer base for Kingman, Arizona? And then we'll draw a polygon around that, and then say, okay, we'll extract the demographics out of that polygon and say, this is your primary customer regularly on a weekly basis, this is who you're servicing. And then we can extract all the demographics out of there, homeownership, renters, projected over five years based off of what we know from the city and then what we would know from just census data growth. So if that, if anybody has questions, like, feel free to ask me afterwards, but that's just the basis of, of kind of how we, we use some of this data. So like I said, you know, cell phone data, if you, if you go to a location from your home, it's going to ping it, probably gets pinged more than you want, but it happens. So this is how a lot of these retailers are actually using this data today. And it's very, you know, highly used at this point, more than it would be for just people plotting a map and saying, what's the radius, a five mile radius, and looking at that and saying, you know, who's within that five mile. This is, this is, tends to be a more conclusive answer for a lot of these groups. So we can go to the next one. This is, again, just another quick heat map showing kind of where some of those are more concentrated for, for Kingman's retail base. A point on this map for, for those on the left side, and then on the right side, you know, you do have some coming from Bullhead City, that's going to be your secondary retail trade area. It's, it's important to some retailers. A lot of them really have to have that primary base in order to be profitable, that they know who they're going to get all the time. Some of your grocers are going to be more interested in that secondary retail trade area. We recently went in and created that for the city of Kingman as well. We didn't initially because it wasn't necessarily the part of the scope, but now that we're kind of talking to some of these larger retailers candidly, we, we probably need to have that and, and ready to go. We've, we've shared this data in the past with some of them, it's just not on a more formal basis. So we've got that created now, and, and we'll share that after that, and it was just created today, so it didn't get to include it in the presentation, but we'll go to the next one. This is that primary trade area. This is going to be 80,000 people, and we'll show that snapshot here in a second. But this is, you know, easy way for us to go in and draw exactly what that primary customer base is. We can go in to the next one.
So before you go on that, Mayor, may I?
Yep.
So you talk about the secondary retail trade area, which.
Sure.
I am extremely interested in.
Okay.
Because expanding that polygon out to the Laughlin, Bullhead City, Fort Mojave, Mojave Valley. I understand that you're taking your data from Walmart shoppers and other locations, so we've got to have those locations where those individuals from that area will come to our area to be pinged, and then that will, that will give us more of a standing, correct?
Yes, and I, I think that your, your primary trade area is, is going to change early. So, so we want to look at that again, probably, you know, maybe at the end of this year, maybe next year as well, just to see how much that, because it increased just from 2023 by, I think, 5,000 people.
Sure. So as we get Marshals, let's say, as we get Marshals towards the end of the year, I want those cell phones pinging because those people are going to be driving from over the hill to Kingman, and that's very, very important. So, so again, we've got to have something in our community that they drive to, to participate and spend, spend their money just as we are participating in spending money over in their economies.
Agreed.
So I, I think, and I hope that Retail Coach will have some discussions using the secondary trade, retail trade area just as much as they are the primary. I mean, you're the experts.
Definitely.
But we also know our area, so.
Agreed, agreed. Yeah, and I think, I will, I will point out just partnership in general at a higher level, too, just because it has been important that, and this is what we do in, in all communities that we work with across the U.S. It's important for us to have a very great connection with Sylvia Bennett, Vice Mayor, City Manager, at all times, because it's, it's only, it's only so much that we can do as, as experts at a higher level and being not on the ground, but it's also equally important to be notified of things and have quick answers from, from those of whom we work with within the city. So we've appreciated that with the city of Kingman because it's been very smooth. So, so just wanted to point that out as a, as a higher level, you know, appreciation.
And you've been very responsive.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
And, and to point out, secondary trade area, just because I can't show it today, we will go ahead and go to the next one just so I can compare it. So it's a little harder to read, but at the top left there, for 2024, it's, it's 80,452 people. That secondary trade area does jump up to 160,000, so you double it when, when you do that secondary trade area. Again, I think it's important, we will note it going forward, for sure. I think it just, there's just some retailers that it doesn't appeal to them as much, and that's okay. But it's a good, it's a good reference point and does definitely open some eyes, so we will continue to do so. I don't believe, I'd have to look back, but I don't believe that the incomes changed drastically, which was interesting, but I think they're pretty similar in, in the secondary reports. But just so you know, this is one of the pages that we would send as an initial conversation to a retailer or restaurant. It's not something that we would send, we wouldn't be sending, you know, this is the census amount of people that live within Kingman, this is all you get, because it's not realistic, because as a retailer, you don't look at, you don't look up how many people live in Kingman, you look at the trade area. Anyway, go ahead. This was another report that we did just to show some of the demand and some of the specific sectors. Overall growth at 2.76%, very high for any community within the U.S. right now. So anything above 1.00, 1.25 is, is a very healthy number. Obviously, you're, you're surpassing that with, with great amounts. This is based on sales, so this is your, on the left there was 2023 demand, and then we're looking five years ahead, and then what that growth could be within that specific sector. So this helps us whenever we were creating that, that match list of who those retailers and restaurants and entertainment users we wanted to go after. We'll go ahead to the next one. And next. I'm probably not going to speak about this one, so sorry, one more time. There we go. Okay. I'm going to speak at a high level, just because of where, where we are today, but just wanted you to all have an update as to where we are as far as types of, of restaurants or retailers that we're speaking to at this time, kind of where they are in the process since we've started. We were very involved in the beginning when Marshals was looking. They had talked about this market for some time. They didn't really have anything that was coming available within the Ross Center. I know it's broken up in between multiple owners, so that's what I call it, the Ross Center, because it's just easier. Anyway, but they, they were originally going to look there, nothing had come available that, that made sense to them from a cost perspective, candidly, and they were bouncing around, and, and the contact at the center that they're going into had changed a couple of times while they were looking, so by us being, you know, a, a good contact within the city, we kept that communication line open the whole time. So we're, we're proud to have, have been a part of that, that conversation and that connection. The other one is a fast casual cafe restaurant. I'm going to just go ahead and say that one just because there's no issue of, of sharing that one. That's, that one's going to be Tropical Smoothie Cafe. They've bought a parcel right in front of the bowling alley, so that's going to be an outlaw there. Development timeline probably within the next year, but it is a franchisee, so it's not concrete as to when that timeline's going to happen. But wanted to, to share the ones that, that are, that are wins within the first year. That's candidly normal with, with our business. It, it does take a lot of time for these, these groups to find a site, run the analysis on it, do the negotiation, acquire it, and then ultimately open. So for Marshall's example, that all happened within that timeline, which is great. The other one just went ahead and acquired the site. Just some, some high level kind of buckets, if you will, of, of who these others are. This is already outdated, so we've already got another casual restaurant that has had their LOI accepted on a building on Stockton Hill. We will have more news to share about that coming very soon, but that's, we feel very confident that it's going to happen. It's going to be a very large sales tax driver for the city of Kingman, and we look forward to having that one come. And, and we'll be able to, like I said, to share that down the road, but at this time, we've been asked to, to not buy the brand, so we, we won't. But good news is, is we do have another win within the first year. And just wanted to list some of these others that, that are on here, but I'm sure I'm going to have questions, so I'm going to open it up, just because.
Thank you. Can you tell us what a fast casual restaurant is?
Sure, sure. So when you think about drive-through, you probably think about McDonald's, right? So that, that's, that's your typical drive-through, that's, that's your quick service restaurant, is what they call it. A fast casual is going to be more like a Panera Bread, or, trying to think of another example real quickly.
Like a Cafe Rio.
Cafe Rio would be another one, just because it incorporates more of a comfortable feel within the lobby, that they can sit down, and it's not just a paper bag that they're going to hand you and go eat your food and, and eat it quickly and get out. There's a little bit of, you know, there's some brands that you kind of really don't, you can't really tell sometimes, but usually it's, it's pretty, you know, identifiable between the brand. And then the casual sit-down restaurant is going to be something where you have a waiter, you know, it's, you have a normal wait time, you come and get seated, full ticket bills, and sit at the same table with your family type, type experience. Does that help?
Yep.
Okay.
It does, thank you.
Perfect. Any other questions on this slide? Okay. I'm, I'm excited. I mean, this, this is, for us, this is, this is a big list for, for a city, and, and within a year. So I, I just wanted to acknowledge that. The other thing that has been important as of late has been Kingman Crossing and that development and, and what recent conversations have happened there. With the interchange being privately funded there, it, it obviously raises some eyebrows a little bit higher because it, it's, it's easier for them to take interest in because they know they don't have to wait on state for that interchange. So as of late, we've been, you know, connecting new development partners to that conversation. We're getting pretty far down the line with two of them. Both are, are very well respected in the development world and over the U.S. One of them a little bit larger than the other, both have great access to. Um, both have great access to capital, so we know that it won't be something that is delayed any longer. I know that it's been a development that's sat there for decades, um, and has not progressed, but we want it to. And so, um, the conversations around that have been enjoyable to hear from these brands. They, they want more, more retail to be within Kingman. There's brands that can't fit in Kingman right now because there's not second generation space for them to go into. So when, when that starts, that, that's really going to open you up. Um, so I, I will say that anything around those development conversations should be prioritized, um, at a high level for a number of reasons, both for retail and for multifamily, mixed use, all of it. I, I think it's going to be a really interesting interchange in the future for Kingman, um, and we look forward to it. So I just wanted to, to note that development as well. Um, I think we can go to the next one. Oh, and this was, uh, just to reiterate what, what Sylvia was talking about, um, these are a couple of conferences that we've attended for a couple of decades now ourselves. Retail Live is a newer one that, that's got more regional, um, locations that, that we can go visit, and those are important just because you can talk directly to those retailers. A lot of the times it's a corporate contact, um, which likely we've already talked to or seen in the past, so it's really good to get face-to-face time for those. Um, but we do attend those regularly and, and represent Kingman during those, those conferences, so. Go to the next one, I think that's it. Yeah. Um, so there's contact info from us, uh, if, if needed, feel free reach out to us or to Sylvia to get our contact info, uh, or Bennett as well. Um, yeah, any, any high level questions?
I had a quick question.
Yes, Counselor.
Um, just out of sheer curiosity, does I-40 trade fourth quarter come up at all? Or, you know, if we're mentioning these, uh, like a putrid gas station or energy efficient, you know, companies or, you know, does that conversation ever happen?
It, it, it's been a, a, a recent conversation, so I've mentioned it a couple of times. It's not as interesting to some of these site selectors at this point just because of, it's not as easy to conceptualize unless they can see it on paper as to what it's going to look like, where it's going to be, and, and know that it's getting a little bit farther down the line. What it's, what its importance has is, um, really the jobs that it's going to create, so I'd be interested to continue to hear more about that, um, specifically because some of these grocers and, and larger targets that we've got are going to be more interested in those, those metrics. So yes, we, we will definitely continue to incorporate it in, in the conversations. For the immediate timeline for some of these groups, probably not, just because they're looking at, these guys, some of these men and women are looking at 100 sites a day, so, um, some of the time it may not be as interesting to them, but we, we will definitely continue to, to mention it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Eric. Any other questions for Caleb? Counselor Savage?
I don't have one for Caleb, I got one for Sylvia.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb.
Thanks, Caleb. I have a burning question for you. We rezoned the B of A and Digs was supposed to come in. What's happening with that?
I cannot say. No. But, um, really, I, it would, it would be more of what the property owner's decision to move forward with the project is, more so than us.
Turge is lagging.
It, it would be more their decision on moving forward, yes.
I was just curious.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I just, I wanted to make a couple of comments because I did go to ICSC, so I, I did get the opportunity to, uh, partake in all of this amazing discussion. I wanted to first, um, give some really good kudos to Sylvia. Sylvia is not afraid to talk to anybody at these conferences. She will walk up to every booth and she is not afraid to tell them how great and wonderful Kingman is. So I appreciated all the conversations that we had. I appreciated watching you in action. You absolutely represent our community in, in the most beneficial way for our citizens. So I really appreciated my time that I spent with you. And to Caleb and Retail Coach, I can't tell you how invaluable. I, I talk to people that go to ICSC and they don't have half the appointments that we did over two days. And so I know that Retail Coach had, um, a part in setting up those, uh, meetings, sitting in on those meetings, directing those meetings, bringing the individuals that you know together with us as the city, um, and, and spurring those conversations. Uh, there is a lot of excitement for Kingman, so Caleb, when, when he speaks that Kingman is at the high list of, of people's radar right now, it, it really is. They, they definitely are watching our community, so we couldn't have had better representation in ICSC, so I thank you for all you're doing for the City of Kingman. It's money well spent and on into the future, I, I truly believe. So thank you to the Economic Development Team. Thank you for hosting myself, a first-timer. I had no idea what to expect, but I want to go again and again and again and again. So it was so fantastic and I just wanted to make sure that the community knew that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I am humbled. Thank you very much, and it was an honor and we were a great team for sure, so thank you.
Keep up the good work, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sylvia or Caleb?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Counselor Saly.
Um, thank you for being here tonight.
Sure.
For your presentation. This is a topic that's very important to our citizens.
Sure, yeah, it's always the fun, she mentions, most fun one that, that you can have, I think.
Right. This is, this is what everybody wants to hear about.
Right, I get it.
What's coming to Kingman?
Sure, sure.
And that's because we are really starved for, um, especially for shopping, but also there's a lot of questions about restaurants. And I wanted to ask you, in comparison to other cities our size, um, where does Kingman stack up and do you feel like we are, um, behind? Like we don't have enough retailers to service the area?
Well, you're, let me say two things. One, we, we try to recruit both regional and national retailers and restaurants. So our focus is not to come in and put out the mom and pop shop that the whole city loves. So if we start talking to a group and they want to go down the street and we tell Sylvia Bennett who it is, and they're like, well, this has been somebody long-term, we don't want to run them out of business, then it's absolutely our intention to not do that and, and create competition that's not needed for something that, that has that local pride. Um, so I wanted to make that note. The other thing is the national chains that are here run some of the highest numbers that, within the brand. So multiple of them, them run those numbers. So Cracker Barrel runs some of the highest numbers in, in the US. Chili's runs some of the highest number within the region. That In-N-Out does some of the highest numbers within the region. I know that, that, that Home Depot actually does pretty well compared to the US, uh, which is, which is impressive, I, I think, compared to how many they've got. Anyway, just, just so you know, this, on a sales perspective and from a visitation perspective. Um, so yes, I, I think you guys are in a good position. We always try to first fill, backfill some of the existing space because we don't want vacant buildings. Um, I, we visit, I visited one today before I came here with Sylvia to, that was recently vacant, and we, we don't want it to sit. Uh, we don't want it to become an area for crime. We don't want it to become an area that's nice for. We want it to stay great like it already is and, and keep it filled. Uh, if it's an older building, we want to keep it in mind, it just may not always be the best fit for some of these brands, um, because they've got to make their metrics, they, they've got changing prototypes regularly, so, um, great position that Kingman's in, but it's, it's, it's us always staying on top of it and, and making sure that, that we're communicating all the time. I mean, we're, we're checking in with these groups all the time, so, um, they like it, they want to be here, we just got to find the right spots for them.
Okay. I'm glad to hear you talk about filling the empty buildings, that we're not just waiting for Kingman Crossing to happen.
No.
We're, we're, we're looking to fill empty spots, bring people here now, and still talking about what's coming in the future.
Definitely.
Um, what are Kingman's biggest hurdles? What, what can we do to bring in more, um, more of these businesses?
Sure. Um, well, you're, you're doing the right things as far as, I, I would say creating your jobs i- is important in what you're already doing, um, because that's going to continue to build your housing, your, your, your population growth. Stay with that for sure so that you can continue to grow that trade area, um, because the larger that that grows, the bigger, bigger fish that are going to come around. And that's just going to take time. I mean, there, there's just no right science to that. I mean, there's, you can give away land for free to, I, I don't think, I'll, I'll just say it, Costco's probably not going to come for a little bit longer because even if they had free land, they're probably not going to put a pin on the map here yet.
Okay.
I think it, it's, it, we're, we're, we're getting there. Um, but just for example, it, it's just natural organic growth that needs to happen. Other than that, I, I think that your other hurdle is, is just being a little bit away from, if you're looking from a franchisee perspective, there's a lot of franchises that may, may not have the ability to expand out this way. They have got a lot of locations maybe in, uh, Phoenix, but they don't necessarily control this area nor do they necessarily want to, or the corporate group that's backing them doesn't have the distribution ability to get up here, um, and it's not efficient that way. So that's probably held some groups back in the past. I, I would, I would just say that, that that's kind of what you're facing at this point. Again, I, I think that who we've talked to know already that these brands are doing well that are here. So it's just, it's just finding the right spot really, and, and it's continuing to stay in front of them, um, because like I said, they're constantly looking at other markets and we want to be front of minds that they don't push us off to 2025. We want them to look at 2024 for a deal rather than say, oh, we'll, we'll put it into the next year's target plans.
Okay.
Hope that helps answer.
Yep, very helpful. My last question is about grocery stores.
Sure.
That's one I also hear about a lot because there's concern that we have two Safeways and a Smiths and they're combining. They could possibly close some stores or sell to, to another, um, grocer, but the grocery stores are so busy now, they're having trouble keeping certain items on the shelves and, and we see that in your numbers where it shows growth. Tell me a little bit about bringing in new grocers to a town and, and where we are with that.
Yeah, um, well, and I, I mentioned it in the presentation that there's, there's one that, that has already talked to a landowner, um, and I, I think that they're, by the end of the summer, I'm pretty sure that they're going to have more movement on that. Um, so it's, it's going to be more of the regional type grocery, it's not going to be your super center type. Um, that's all I'm going to say, but it, it's, it's, it's just.
We're going to try to pull it out.
It's just, it's just going to be, um, something that is going to probably fill a little bit of that void.
Okay.
Um, to have an additional option. I think that your concern of brands joining together and potentially closing a location, they are really good, it's really good to real estate where they are, so I know that we could backfill it with something else if needed. Um, obviously the goal would be to backfill with a grocer, and there are groups out there that do take existing space and prefer that than building their own. There's another one that's kind of waiting in the wings that, I don't know if I notated that one that we talked to initially. It's another one that, that just needs a larger space, but there's not been one that they can efficiently go into. So they would probably be a, a good player, and it's another more of a, kind of a mid-size grocer, and that, if you will. I think we're prepared to, to stay on top of it. I, I don't think that there should be any worry of, of losing that, that market and being short on things much longer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Counselor. You'd mentioned Cracker Barrel, and of course, huge success story.
Sure.
And I'm not sure if a lot of you, I've told, I've shared with a number of you, but the backstory on that Cracker Barrel, when they, as most, most of us know, Cracker Barrels, they, they like to relocate, they like to locate right along a freeway, just you can, you can see them from the freeway.
Right.
And this Cracker Barrel was the first one that was located more than a half mile off the freeway, the one in Kingman. It was a leap of faith for them. The only reason I know that is because I talked to the builder that was building it back in 99, and we did the trap, my company did the trash hallway for them.
There you go.
And he shared this, and he said this is a huge, they were taking a huge chance on Kingman and our Cracker Barrel, but look at the numbers now.
Yep.
It's amazing.
Great.
That this Cracker Barrel has that, and that's, that's the story I want to make sure that we get out there to all these other retailers. If they have a name, people here in Kingman, people off the highway too, they're going to stop and visit them.
Agreed.
It's a huge number.
Yeah, Stockton Hill is very acknowledged by, by anybody that we've been talking to in general. I will say that we, we've done what we can to shift some of the focus for some of these groups in case they have any worries about maybe leaving this market, or not leaving market, but, um, looking at Kingman and then maybe stepping away because there's not something available on Stockton Hill. East Danny Divine is, is a great corridor in a lot of ways, um, and, and as of late, a lot more groups have been looking. So we'll continue to do that and kind of shift some of the kind of concentration there, if you will. But yeah, I, I, anything, I mean, the groups know most of the time where they want to be, and it, and it includes that section where Cracker Barrel is near Home Depot, all the way up to where Chili's is, um, and that Chili's does extremely well, um, compared to a lot of the brands that are, locations that they've got. So I agree, we'll continue to push that story.
Great. Caleb, thank you. Any other counselors for Caleb once again? Okay, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for hopping on.
Moving on, on item 5B, Rancho Santa Fe and Kingman Crossing traffic, traffic interchange update, and of course, Mr. Walsh, you already took care of Rancho Santa Fe, so we'll let you finish up with that other part.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I believe Caleb alluded to it a little bit, that there is some interest in the, the, quite a bit of interest in the Kingman Crossing. Uh, we have had some introductory conversations, uh, with, with KRC on the, um, interchange there, and we'll continue with those conversations, um, again, very early on right now, but there is interest in, in moving that forward, so we'll continue with those discussions and, and have, hopefully have more for the, the council very soon.
Okay. Any, any questions for Mr. Walsh? Okay, thank you. Item six, announcements by Mayor, Council members and City Manager. Tim, we'll, we'll pick on you again.
Nothing to share, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Walker?
Nothing, nothing.
Counselor Savage?
Yeah, I'd like to just share that, um, Jamie chairs, Mayor and I attended the Fire Department's awards presentation. It was fabulous. They did a great job. It's nice to see that we are getting recruits back, we're getting staff back, not only with the Fire Department, but we, we attended the, with Rusty, the police awards, but our community should be proud of our first responders. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Counselor Ward? Counselor Saly? Counselor Eric, are you still with us?
Yep. Um, I just want to congratulate Mojave Community College for their advanced manufacturing groundbreaking that they did today. I didn't get to be there, I'm very bummed, but I'm super stoked that, uh, we really get to utilize, you know, and train, uh, real talent for our city, and, uh, this is going to be a big step in taking advantage of our industrial park.
Thank you, Counselor. Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, everyone that had a part in the planning and execution of the First Friday Celebration last week, or was it last week? It feels like a week ago.
Week and a half ago.
Week and a half ago. Oh, I've slept since then. Um, you did a fantastic job. There were so many happy people downtown, and so I, I look forward to many more First Fridays that look like that, um, in the coming months. So everybody that had a, a hand in that, um, much appreciation. Our citizens really enjoyed themselves.
Thank you. Actually, I think most of you have already touched on everything, and I was going to start with the First Friday. I have never seen so many cars and people in the downtown area. Uh, it was so well-attended, and of course, part of that too was the ribbon cutting for our Beale Street Improvement Project, which is done, and opening that all up, and so just a great downtown area that we have now. Little, actually, a week ago tomorrow, we did have our Vet Court graduation ceremony, Little, actually, a week ago tomorrow, we did have our Vet Court Graduation Ceremony, and why is it significant? Because as a city council, we support our city magistrate and his Veterans Court, and they graduated the 100th graduate, so, and a number of counselors and staff were there, and we appreciate that, support of that. Of course, Counselor Savage mentioned the Fire Department, Department pinning and advancement awards ceremony on Saturday. Great. We're blessed with the first responders that we have in our community, good men and women that, that, uh, serve us. We appreciate that. And then of course, and Counselor Erica mentioned the, the MCC Training Facility out at the airport today, uh, just so much going on in our city, and we're just going to see more of that. It's amazing what is happening in Kingman, and we're so blessed to be part of that and be an active participant in it, so appreciate that. I do have one other note, um, our city clerk brought it to my attention. This Saturday, on June 22nd, we have Teen Night at Centennial Pool. Annie, do you have any more information what time that starts? No? Okay. Well, please go on, I'm sure there's something on the city website, so just want to make sure that our teens know about that too, because oftentimes we hear, there's nothing for our teenagers to do, this is, this is, it'd be a good activity to go to and participate in. Uh, anyway, once again, appreciate all that is done in our community, the service it has given. Item number seven, council requests for future reports and updates. Council? Seeing none? Then we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight.